Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call our committee reporter. If you could please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And I'd like to ask Sean Stellman, our unit coordinator, to sit in the line.
Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Councilman Ty Schultz, please lead us in prayer.
Dear Lord, please watch over our -- I'm sorry. Dear Lord, please watch over our work tonight as we meet as a council. And please take care of our servicemen and women who are overseas and keep them safe. And please remember all of those who have lost their lives defending our country.
Can you do that? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Curran? Badad?
Here.
Napp?
Here.
Levy?
Present.
Seaberry?
Here.
Stanley?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Kova?
Here.
Neckerchuk?
Present.
Hallis?
Here.
Cabo?
Present.
Sadi?
Present.
Iskanti?
Present.
Palmer?
Present.
Wettmore?
Present.
Nero?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
Sheenese?
Present.
Otello?
Here.
Skazafaba?
Present.
There's, uh, thank you. There being eighteen present and three absent, let the record reflect the following. Mr. Curran is out of the country. Mr. Perkins has a work commitment and Mr. Skazafaba has an illness in the family. The first thirty minutes of each city council meeting are reserved for public speaking. I ask any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening, please do so about an item that is specifically on the agenda. And you must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury to address the council. But that is there any member of the public that wishes to address the council this evening? Start with Mrs. Waller and then more than later.
I'm Ms. Waller, eighty-three Island Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut. First, I'd like to add something. I guess under the reports, I've asked Mr. Levy to look into it as well. As I came by the Island Avenue Park tonight, the parking lot itself, the gates were locked and there were cars all over. Island Avenue and Mallory and Green. So if you could keep them open at least until dusk, it would be nice. I'm not even sure why we'd lock them, but there are a lot of cars out on the road and a lot of kids using the park, so thank you for fixing the park. Also wanted to thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Shepherd and everyone who allowed me to see the tape of last week's public hearing and committee meeting and the whole. It answered a lot of my questions. This is number sixteen.
And it is in May, Mrs. Waller. I just want to let you know, we're still working out, but I'm glad I worked for you. So any feedback you can give us about would be appreciated.
Well, as you know, I've attended most of the HLR group meetings for the last twenty years, so I've seen it from the other side as well as our side. I'm upset with the terms of the contract to being eighty years, and I know you all spoke on that issue, so I won't go into it very far. I still have some problems with the contract. Five point two obligations of the city and the Danbury Solid Waste Authority, forbearance and certain activities. Why would we agree to not use eminent domain to acquire the property or agree to non-convict law? I think we're tying our own hands and I think that's wrong. If you don't want to foreclose on Mr. Winters' property, maybe we should foreclose on Mr. Galante's. He still owns the front park, which has made a dollar Mr. Winters a lot. And that way we would be able to keep it open for Mr. Winters. Number two, I do not want to stand with Mr. Winters to enlarge either his property or the tonnage entering his property. This contract said that we have to stand with Mr. Winters as it has been proposed by the company. What has he proposed? Mr. Galante wanted to triple the amount of MSW coming into the site. What has Mr. Winters proposed? Must we stand with him on future upgrades? Must we stand with him to enlarge his property? I know he's buying a lot of the houses and that sort of thing around it, so I don't really want to stand with him to enlarge the property. The modification of permits, again, this is like number two. He wants to expand the existing permits. How large does he want this to be? How many trucks will be entering or leaving the site on our roads? And I know that's what some of the money is for. Please don't approve this contract as it stands. Number fifteen point one, I do not think that Mr. Winters should be able to sell to another purchaser without input from our city. We could be sold back to Mr. Galante or to someone else who may be in the mafia. We don't know. If there's no one else there to overlook or to speak of, how do you know what he's going to do? I did not see anywhere in this contract where we have a cancel for costs. It was mentioned in the public hearing the other night, and I looked through it, but I didn't see it. Maybe it exists. Again, thanks to everyone who helped me see the contract, tape, or excuse me, the meeting and tape and hearing. You asked wonderful questions and I appreciate all of your efforts on the city's BEAT Act. I would personally rather give up this money than sign this contract for what it will bring the city, rather than assign such a one-sided contract. I believe everything in this contract favors Mr. Winters. And now number three on the agenda. My memory may be wrong, but I remember that the tax deferrals all rested with the individual homeowners and not with the developer with the property down on BRT on Elm Street. It was like six, seven years ago, but it seems to me it was always the individual homeowners got to not pay taxes on the increase in the assessment. It was a tax deferral for seven years, as I remember, if I remember correctly, but it did not give the developer, then BRT, any kind of incentive. I think it would require the whole new deferral process. And I do think the deferrals were only on increases in the assessed amount and not necessarily the whole tax bill. Thank you very much again for letting me see the tape of the public hearing the other day. I was indisposed of all, so I appreciate your efforts, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Waller, if you may, I'd like to address the council this evening. So you're in with them?
Yes. My name's Henry Stannitt and I live on Twenty-Five Old Everson Road in Danbury, Connecticut. Unfortunately, I happen to live on a lake. The tax structure that just was proposed this past year, it just gone up. My taxes went up thirty-three percent.
Mr. Stannitt, could you just kind of relate which item you're speaking on?
Item number two.
Uh, yes, two.
Anyhow, bottom line being, I'm on instant income on Social Security and I'm seventy years old. Everyone in my neighborhood is seventy years or older. Now, you're going to drive a candidate, we can't afford this kind of taxes. My taxes went up over three thousand dollars, thirty-four hundred and sixty bucks. That's insane. My appraised value went up eleven thousand dollars. I want to know who appraised my house, Stevie Wonder? That's crazy. It's absolutely crazy. But bottom line being, I mean, we can laugh, we can joke with it. It's really, we can't afford it. So evidently, what you want to do is drive the older people out, have younger people come in with kids so that they can pay, so it can cost Danbury twelve thousand dollars per child, and if they have two, three kids, where are your benefits there? Then you lose money. You better than the W. you know than the W. you don't know. You guys are driving us out. We can't afford it. It's insane. It really is insane. Thank you, Lizzy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stannitt. Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Officer Garfield.
Thank you, Officer Garfield. I'm at Haiti, Danbury. I want to talk on item number three, senior tax statement. A number of years ago, when we discussed this, we're dealing with Crosby Street and dealing with this property, I was against it then and I'm still against it now. I find it very much a slippery slope when we offer tax incentives like this to residential developers. I can understand it for a corporation or a business or a company that wants to come in and it's not going to use the services, it's basically paying taxes for where they are. We were told with BRT that it was a new BRT, it wasn't like the old BRT, and as soon as they got the, we were also told with Crosby Street that, one, we were lucky to have them built because there's been damage to the site, which was later probably false. Two, we were told it was going to be for middle and low-income families that would need homes that would stimulate downtown. We found out soon after, it was fairly dry on the contract, but that wasn't the case. BRT tripled their occupancy by turning it into dorms for Westcon, and because the contract was written so loosely, they pretty much could do anything they want. And even though I know some in the council here tried to reverse it, it was unsuccessful. Now we're coming into doing this yet again on the Kennedy Avenue area, where it's a shame what's happened to it. I mean, it's been a garbage dump for seven years. But we don't know what they're going to do there. And the reason why I bring up these points now, I know you're going to put this to an ad hoc meeting, but at some ad hocs, the public isn't allowed to speak, so I'm going to do it here. We don't know how many units are going to be there. We don't know what the project's going to look like. We don't know anything about it. We have to go off what the mayor as negotiator has been talking to the developer about. We don't know what the impacts are going to be. We don't know if with these luxury apartments, if we're going to have children in these apartments. If we are, we're going to have something like we have over on Brookside, where you watch the school bus pull in and two school buses empty out, two school buses go up, which adds a burden to the school system, which is already overpopulated, because it already doesn't have enough revenue to do all that it needs to do, and yet we're going to, not end, we're going to have a tax abatement, and children are going to be going to the schools, basically putting us into a negative situation. In a time when, you know, the previous gentleman spoke, where people are strapped and the city is looking for every dollar it can, I don't think we could really afford to do The project itself, I mean, I went and spoke when it was in front of the zoning board, and they were discussing the traffic patterns that were going to be coming out there. I believe it was like five hundred and thirty-eight apartments. I don't remember, it was so long ago. And the way they were going to deal with the traffic was, well, we're going to re-time the lights, and that's going to fix everything. When I got up and spoke, they said, well, traffic is like water and it follows the path of least resistance. If you think traffic's bad enough now at the bottom of Clive Water Bridge, quit to put this project in when everybody is cutting across Rose Street and going over to get out of hybrid, to go out of town and do the work. I think you really need to look at, one, what's the real benefit? I would love to see the property developed. I would love to see something there besides what we have. Apartments fantastic. If it vitalizes downtown, the average, great. I don't think the abatement is the way to go. I think we could do other things. We've given up, you know, reductions on the sewer hookups, we've given reduction on the permitting process, we've given reductions on everything else that's related. You know, things that the average homeowner's not going to get. I think the abatement with, you know, what happened last time is very nerve-wracking. What the possible negative impact to the city's financial situation, where if there's children are not in there and the impact on the schools, there's another thing that needs to be considered. So I urge you, when you go into the ad hoc, to consider all of these areas, consider, you know, we'd love to get people downtown, but consider also what the basis is going to be as far as the tax structure and the financial situation of the downtown. Thank you for your time.
And have any other members of the public, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Mary Ann Howe. I live on Twenty-Lake Road in Danbury, and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the gentleman that's going before, I'm number two. My husband and I moved to Danbury fourteen years ago. We have a beautiful home on Cambridge Lake. It's a small, modest home, twelve hundred feet, not big by any means. We have sixty feet of water. Very small, modest. Our taxes went up three thousand dollars this year. Taxes in Danbury have been up proudly, as the mayor has mentioned in the paper. Taxes went up, did not go up on sixty percent of homes in Danbury. Or they stay the same. Ours went up thirty-three percent. And I'm, I have just retired recently. My husband just retired. We bought the home to enjoy in our retirement. And we're going to be taxed out of our house. So I'm asking you, and in the past when the taxes went up, there was a, it was phased-in over a period of time. There is no phase-in. I just paid twenty-nine hundred dollars for my first installment. So I just ask you to look into this and to hope that we can eventually save Danbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Mrs. Mitchell.
Margaret Mitchell, Park Place Main Street. Item, about the solid waste authority and with the most benefits. In general, I agree with Lynn Meller. When the federal government took over Mr. Galante's operation, they said that his contract should have been in restraint trade and that those of us, the small commercial accounts, had not been fairly treated. Unfortunately, the federal government just sort of ran his operation into the ground or off the rails. They still use the same contract. I have a fear of contracts. Winters Brothers, when they came to me as a small commercial account, is still using the same contract as Mr. Galante, but they've added one more feature, and that is I may never have more than two hundred pounds in my dumpster. And I don't have anywhere weighing it, so some weeks it probably does have fifty pounds in there and other weeks I can't think about. But I'm afraid of contracts that favor in any way anyone in the trash industry. It has nothing to do with Mr. Winters. It has to do with the overall policy of the industry. And on the doing tax things, again, number three about Kennedy Place, I'd like to have the tax advantages be to people creating jobs. And as much as I'd love downtown to redevelop, I'm not sure that kind of tax incentive is going to go for housing. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Seeing none then, we'll move on with our announcements, a few of them, so be patient with us. August eighth is Mike Hallis's birthday. Happy birthday, Councilman. August fourteenth is Phil Cola's wedding anniversary. Congratulations, Phil. August twenty-first is Dwayne Perkins's birthday. He's not here tonight, but let's give a shout out anyway. And August twenty-eighth is Ben Sheenese's birthday. Congratulations, Ben. A number of other events that you see on here, specifically, the Saturday, August tenth is the Ecuadorian flag raising at City Hall. That's about half an hour, and that'll be at ten a.m., so Perkins will be here to meet me early in the morning and get that done. The festival is on the eleventh at the Ives Concert Park, always a good time. On August fifteenth, the Danbury Sports Dome is having their grand opening at Twenty-Five Shelter Rock Lane, finally. And we're excited for that. They've got, I think, a nice program set up for us. At the same time, at ten a.m. is the World War II Ceremony at the Rose Garden by the Spark. This is a new ceremony for veterans that we implemented last year, and that'll be at ten a.m. August seventeenth is the Jio Festival down on City Center Green, and that starts at eleven a.m. and that goes to ten p.m. It's a great time, good food. And then on the backside, you'll see, August twenty-seventh is the Housing Authority City of Danbury Senior Picnic, which is held at the Spark. This is by no means not all of the events that are going on this month, but does give you the flavor of some of the things. And of course, as always, you can contact my office for best times to attend. With that, Mr. Majority Leader, excuse me, Mr. President, can we have the minutes, please?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to make a motion at this time that we wait the reading of the minutes, as all members have copies and copies are filed in the legislative assistant's office.
Second. Motion made seconded. Any changes, corrections, additions to the minutes as presented? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All opposed, signify by saying nay. I just have the motion carries unanimously. Quickly, I also want to mention that on August tenth is Councilman Palmer's birthday. I'm sorry, Hal, but I missed your birthday. Happy birthday, my friend. Mr. Majority Leader, may we have the consent calendar, please?
Yes, you may, Your Honor. Consent calendar, August sixth, two thousand thirteen, Regis Falls. Number four, receive the communication and approve the reappointment of Ed Rippon Bellstein and Linda Murray as members of the Conservation Commission in terms to expire July one, two thousand sixteen. Number five, receive the communication and approve the appointment of Laurie Lee Weinstein as a member of the Danbury Museum and Historical Society Authority. Number seven, receive the communication and approve the memorandum of understanding mutual assistance FCI Danbury between the Federal Correction Institution, Federal Bureau of Prisons, and Danbury Police Department. Number eight, receive the communication and approve the funding of the Danbury Housing Partnership Project Homeless Connect for the program to be held on December thirteenth, two thousand thirteen. These funds are not to exceed four thousand dollars. Number nine, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing the Health and Human Service Department enter into collaboration with Western Connecticut State University, thus authorizing the student education affiliation agreement allowing WCSU students access to work with clients in homeless shelter for purposes of clinical work experienced as part of their education program. Number ten, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing the Health and Human Service Department to apply for and accept funding from the state of Connecticut Department of Public Health for a lead poisoning prevention program. This funding not to exceed forty-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars for the period of seven one, two thousand thirteen to six thirty, two thousand fourteen. Number eleven, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark DeBautin to apply for and accept funding through the state of Connecticut MOSA program for HVAC upgrades, gas conversion at Carywell Mansion. This funding is not to exceed forty-three thousand, four hundred dollars. Number twelve, receive the communication and adopt the resolution authorizing Mayor Mark DeBautin to approve and submit the seeds, two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen, consolidated plan and annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, year thirty-nine, through the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Available funding for the time period of eight one, two thousand thirteen to seven thirty-one, two thousand fourteen, totals five hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars with no local match required. Number thirteen, receive the reports of planning commission and city engineer and approve the request for extension of time for sanitary sewer extension approval at four-seater crust drive. The approval is subject to submission of all plans and documents as required by the Engineering Department and the Office of Corporation Counsel. Number fourteen, receive the reports of the Corporation Counsel, Planning Commission, and City Engineer for approve and approve the request of Oakview LLC for the conveyance of road widening strips at Chambers Road and King Street. The approval is subject to the petitioners completing all necessary documentation as required by the Engineering Department and the Office of Corporation Counsel. Number fifteen, receive the report of the Committee of the Hall and approve the adoption of the amendments to Code of Ordinance, section two dash fifty-six point eight, authorizing the designation of three alternate members of the Conservation Commission. And that, sir, is a consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Majority Leader. With your pleasure, council. Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second. Motion made seconded by Mr. Taylor. Mr. Cowan?
Mark DeBautin, if I could, just for the record, you noticed that in item number twelve, there's a paper gap error on second line, city, two thousand thirteen, should be two thousand fourteen, it's all there, you know, that should be.
I think it's a five-year plan. That's correct. It should be twenty-eighteen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, may we have item one, please?
Communication, Colas lease Head Start Building, Thirty-Seven Horsters Street. Dear councilmembers, as you will recall...
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With your pleasure, council. Mr. Wettmore?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee consisting of Corporation Counsel, representative from the mayor's office, a representative from the Connecticut Institute for Communities, and a report from the planning commission.
Ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Mrs. Ty Schultz in the chair, Mr. Levy, and Mr. Iskanti. Madam Clerk, item two, please.
Communication, tax relief for residential slash apartment taxpayers.
With your pleasure, council. Mrs. Stanley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to send this to an ad hoc committee, include the Director of Finance, a representative from the mayor's office, Corporation Counsel, as well as the tax assessor.
Thank you, Mrs. Stanley. Since he's not here, we're going to put Mr. Curran in the chair, Mr. Wettmore, and Mr. Sheenese. Madam Clerk, item three, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc Kennedy Place.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With your pleasure, council. Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc Corporation Counsel, representative of the mayor's office, director of planning, and director of economic development.
Thank you. Mr. Knapp, ad hoc shall consist of the following. Mrs. Stanley as chairperson, Mr. Knapp, and Mr. Iskanti. Madam Clerk, item six, please.
Communication, request for ad hoc volunteer fire departments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With your pleasure, council. Mrs. Ty Schultz?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to refer this to an ad hoc committee consisting of Director of Finance, Corporation Counsel, Fire Chief, representative from the mayor's office, and the president of the Danbury Volunteer Firemen's Council.
Thank you, Mrs. Ty. Councilman Ty Schultz, the ad hoc committee shall consist of the following. Councilman Seaberry in the chair, Councilman Knapp, and Councilman Sidlin. Item seven through fifteen were consent. Madam Clerk, item sixteen, please.
Support ordinance. Solid waste and recycling authority code of ordinance, section two dash fifty-six point eighteen, and hold community benefit and cooperation agreement with Winters Brothers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With your pleasure, council on this. Mr. Cowan?
Your Honor, would you, would you maybe give the council just a brief update on the request out of the public hearing for some of the important amendments with the Winters Brothers?
Mr. Cabo, council made some requests to, about some key issues they had pointed out. We've had a couple of discussions with the staff at Winters Brothers, but we're not ready yet to report on anything. We need a couple more weeks of vacations. Laurie's are out of town, those kinds of things. We've run into a little bit, so at this point, I don't believe much to report, other than we reached out and we've had some preliminary discussions and expressed some of the concerns. I do have, at the request of Councilman Nero, I've been asking clerk to pass out, just should you take with you tonight, a sort of a bullet point, a sort of the highlights of the agreement. Councilman Nero had requested that attorney pension draft this up, and since we were making it for him, I said, let's just give it to everybody so the folks can just have something to look at. So I'll pass that out, but beyond that, until we complete those discussions.
Well, in that case, Your Honor, we knew as a council committee in the whole that it was a short time for the requests that we'd made, and we had understood that there may be a possibility we would be able to do it. So at that time, this time, I'd like to make a motion and we tabled item number sixteen. It's included entirely to the September agenda.
Motion made seconded by Mr. Otello. I don't believe Mr. Winter motion tabled was available. So at this time, I'll try your minds on tabling. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposition? Consider item sixteen tabled. Madam Clerk? Sorry, I'm keeping the business. Item seventeen, please.
Can I report DXR Holdings, Wollington Road, D restriction? Can I report DXR Holdings, Wollington Road, D restriction?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. What's your pleasure, Counsel? Mr. Cobb?
Your Honor, since the committee's final meeting, some new information has come to light that I think is important and should be discussed. So at this time, I'd like to waive the reading of the committee's report and make a motion to recommit item number seventeen back to its original ad hoc.
Motion's been made and seconded by Mr. Negerzad. When a motion to recommit, we do need a simple majority vote. So any discussion about recommitting? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, just a reminder on the ad hoc committee there, that is, Councilman Knapp is the chairman. Councilman Cabo was on that, and Councilman Motel. Mr. President, Department reports, please.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion at this time that we waive the reading of Department reports, as all members have copies and copies are filed in the Legislative Assistance Office.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion under Department reports. Discussion, please.
Your Honor, I wonder if you could address the issue that Mrs. Waller brought forward as it relates to the locking of the parks, parking?
Mr. Drolle, you want to take a stab at that one, or Mr. Kaplans?
Highland Avenue Park has a spray park, which is open from twelve to six. Every morning, the park's department goes over to the park, unlocks the gate, usually by eight, nine o'clock. We have a spray park attendant that is always there while the park is open. When they leave at six o'clock, the gate is shut at the street and locked. We had considerable issues with the park, with people parking in there overnight during the evening. It required us to lock it to keep the people, or the cars out of the lot. We had some vandalism and some things that went on there that shouldn't have been going on. So through the Highway Department ourselves, we put up a post-it sign saying that the park closes at six o'clock.
Mr. Leighton?
Through the chair. My understanding from what I heard that people are still going in the park after six o'clock. Is that an enforcement issue?
What's happening, or what I believe is happening, is that there's a group of people that are going there and having some activities on the field in the back. They are not a recognized group through the Recreation Department. They don't have a permit, they don't have insurance. I don't even know who they are that are there. And this does, this has happened from time to time, where we have received calls in the office, knowing the cars are in the street, but they have been told that they can't park in the parking lot because we're going to lock it at six. I don't know how late they stay, but I'm sure, you know, it's getting darker earlier now, and I'm sure if they are going there, are ramping it up earlier. But there's no other place for them to park than on the street.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kaplans. It sounds to me that perhaps the Police Department could do a little passerby once in a while and enforce that required rule that you had.
I mean, I could notify the Police Department, ask them to take a ride by there in the evening after six o'clock.
It only becomes an issue while the spray parks are still open. Once we shut off the spray park, I believe you leave that open after Labor Day and prior to the...
We'll close Highland Avenue down the week the school begins. We'll continue to operate the Rogers Park Spray Park till Labor Day, and then we'll open that one on the weekends until the end of September. But that's a, the Rogers Park Spray Park is a high, is used a lot more than Highland Avenue is, and that's why we shut the one down and keep the other one open through September. Usually, the weather's good enough to keep it open.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sade.
Thank you, Your Honor. Three, Mr. Kaplans. You said something about maybe having the police do, just to ride by and check things out at Mr. Levy's request. The question always, is there anything that prohibits those activities that you explained by an unorganized entity in using the field? Or is the strict issue here that you close the gates at six to prevent parking there? So is there anything currently that prohibits the uses you just explained that are going on the field?
In order for anyone to use our facilities on a regular, organized basis, they need to come to the office, apply for a permit, schedule, get a liability policy that protects the city and whatever the group is, and, you know, they will be issued a permit accordingly, so there'll be someone that has a responsibility of that site, you know, with possibly a key, you know, for the gate and all the proper documentation go along with it. That is not something that anyone has requested, and as I said, I, you know, I couldn't tell you who it is that is going there, other than I've been told that there's some younger kids there playing soccer.
So if I may follow up, if it is something that's used on a regular basis by some entity or group that's doing it in some organized fashion, they would have to go through that process, but if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, if it's just a group of kids or young adults who are just having, you know, a throw-down game, that's allowed, though, isn't that?
It's not.
It's not?
So without the, without the proper documentation and the insurance, technically, they're not allowed. I mean, I haven't gone there and just say, hey, you know, throw them off the field. I know it's younger kids, but obviously, there's a number of adults that are bringing the children to the park. As I said, they have not, they have not gone through the right channels to establish something on a more regular basis.
Okay, so then what I'm hearing is that there is something that's pretty clear of the current allowable use of that park that can be enforced?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that, it just, I was a little confused. Is that just pre, is that post-six o'clock when the gates close, or is that any time?
That's, that's really any time.
Any time?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Motel?
Thanks, Mayor. To the chair, to the Director of Public Works.
Mr. Iger DeRolle?
The next time we meet here as a body, unless there's a public hearing, school will already be in session, so I have to kind of get this out on the floor tonight instead of doing it September one, I'd really like to. But we've all seen a tremendous amount of construction activity at the public schools. In particular, Park Avenue's been a huge amount of excavation drainage and things like that. And I'm just wondering if you could briefly address that. Will the exit and ingress be ready, the school bus tracks and things like that for the start of school? And I guess we're putting some more classrooms and things like that on the back, and I'm not expecting all that to get done, but could you just tell us what the kids are going to find when school starts?
Sure. It's approximately ten million dollars worth of work, so I'll try to keep it, try to keep it short and sweet for you, but there is extensive cycle right now, which involves the reconfiguration of the entire parking and the dropping off of the children. In addition to that, we're reconfiguring the parent drop-off. As we try to do in every school, we try to separate bus traffic from the parent traffic. So what you're seeing in front of the building basically encompasses that goal is achieved. We're going to have all that work done, so the parking and the drop-off will be available when the kids come back to school. Very short timeframe to do that. As you know, because you're pretty close to that, the contractor's going to be working seven days a week, and ten to twelve hours a day. So very, very aggressive schedule. But it looks good, we feel they're going to make it. You were talking a little bit about the addition. There are, there is a large addition, about twenty thousand square feet. I think it's twelve total classrooms. So it's a pretty substantial addition. That's going off, you're standing in front of the building to the right of the building. When that construction takes place, which will be done during the school year, and it will be ready for next, next year to be occupied, we will be opening up access onto Crescent Avenue, which is the adjacent street. We met with the residents there, they did have some concerns, we addressed most of them. And I'm telling you, it's limited use. It's three buses for a half hour.
Good morning.
It's just, just the afternoon. So there'll be a custodian there to monitor the activities. There's a chain, it gets locked when you're signed, so. And that's really to safeguard the traffic around that construction site on the, on the, so. In essence, I mean, what else are we doing? We're remodeling the media center, which is great, they've been asking to have that done for a while. We're also expanding the cafeteria, as you know, it's a pretty small cafeteria, and with the additional population, it's definitely necessary. And we're doing some other items, some bathrooms, renovations, and some regular main entrances and reconfiguring the space. So in a nutshell, it doesn't seem like that's ten million dollars worth of work, but it's, the building itself is pretty expensive.
Okay, I think that was a yes. I'll be right in. Yeah, so that, then the other thing is that beautiful classic facade of two schoolhouses in sort of the Prairie Center. That's unchanged, and the view of that is unchanged. There won't be a wall of new classrooms in front of that, it'll simply be parking like it is now, a little bit more of it, but you'll still have the school setback, and really, most of these changes will only be taking place in the rear of the building off to September.
That's correct. And the architects spent quite a bit of time trying to, you know, basically fit the new design into the old. It does have a pretty classic look to it.
Thank you. You guys are going to do well.
Thank you. Any further discussion under Department reports? We talked about parks and schools, anything else? Seeing none then, I'll try your minds on acceptance of the Department reports. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Signify by saying nay. I just have a motion carries unanimously. I just want to point out, there are several Department Heads missing tonight, not because they're disrespecting the council, but both Michelle from the library and I think one other Department Head fell ill, there's some kind of respiratory thing going on around it, which Sade can attest to, Ms. Alaska Warner. Jenny is out of town, or actually on vacation this week, so they'll be here ready to go in September. With that, I'll extend all committees and entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Haddad, seconded by Mr. Seaberry, all favor endurance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Return.